All right, I want to welcome everyone here to our Select Board meeting. The hour is 7:00 PM and it is Tuesday, November 21st. Can I invite everyone in the room to please join us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Our first item is a public hearing on an entertainment license. But before we get to that, I was just informed that our former state senator, Susan Tucker, who also, I believe, represented Tewksbury as a state representative for some time prior to being a state senator, passed away yesterday or the day before. And I know Senator Tucker personally, and she always represented our interests with class and a lot of professionalism. So I'd like to just offer just a brief moment of silence in her honor. Thank you. And thank you for bringing that to my attention. All right, we are fortunate to have State Senator Feingold and Representative Robertson here tonight, and I want to just beg their indulgence for a few minutes. We need to deal with a matter that was on last week and we unfortunately had to cancel our meeting. So this is a required public hearing, and I don't think it will take long, but I'm going to ask if the representative from MHF Tewksbury Operating can come forward. I'll read the public hearing notice and then we'll discuss the request itself. Notice is hereby given that the Select Board will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, November 14, 2023, at 7:00 PM. Now rescheduled to Tuesday, November 21st, 7:00 PM, on the application of MHF Tewksbury Operating Tenant 7 LLC, doing business as Hilton Garden Inn located at 4 Highwood Drive, Tewksbury, by the manager James Tortolot, for an entertainment license consisting of recorded music, live music, live bands, dancing by patrons, disc jockey, and amplifiers. The entertainment will be Monday through Saturday during the hours of 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM, and on Sunday from 1:00 PM to 1:00 AM. The hearing will be held in the Select Board's meeting room, 1009 Main Street in Tewksbury. We always welcome input from the public, and we encourage the written comments ahead of the meeting. And this notice was filed properly, and we have copies of the tombstone that is dated 11/1 of '23, and certified mail receipts to the abutters of the property. So I want to welcome our guest and ask you to introduce yourself because you're obviously not Mr. Tortolot.
I am not. Elizabeth Pizzano from Upton, Connaughton, Devlin Council for the Hilton Garden Inn. Jim couldn't make it tonight.
No worries. We've talked to you both a few times in the last few months.
Yes.
So as we understand it, and I think we've had an initial discussion on this, but this is the, I think, the last license you're looking for?
Yes.
Entertainment license?
Yes, correct.
And I think, as I mentioned in the hearing notice, the application indicates they're looking to offer recorded music, dancing by patrons, live music, use of amplifiers, potentially live bands and disc jockey. And the hours again are Monday through Saturday, 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM, and Sunday, 1:00 PM to 1:00 AM. Are there any other items that you want to mention that we should be aware of, other than what I just said?
No, that's exactly it. It's the same proposal as what the prior owners had on their license, so it's essentially staying the exact same. We're not asking for any more, any less.
Great, okay. And I do want to ask a question. I'm not sure if you'll have an answer to this, but we had the department, different departments in town that are involved with the regulatory process review the application, and the Board of Health indicated that they would not be supportive of the bar use until a food permit was issued, and the Fire Department required an inspection. And these go back almost a month ago now, so I'm just curious if you know if those two things have been resolved.
So I don't know if they have been resolved, but I do know that the Board of Health wasn't, they weren't going to issue the food permit until the kitchen buildout was complete. I know that was an outstanding item in order for them to move forward. So I'm pretty sure, I wish Jim was here to be able to say the exact date, but I know that they had an anticipated date of the kitchen buildout, either end of this month or at some point this month, I can confirm. But they are aware of that.
Okay.
And I'm pretty sure, I do know actually Jim was met with the Board of Health for like three hours this morning.
Is that right?
So maybe something got resolved.
All right. So I would just ask my colleagues to keep those two things in mind and maybe make, when we get to a motion, to make it subject to the compliance with those two things if there's a motion to approve. Do anyone of my colleagues have any questions of the applicant's counsel? Ms. Wellman?
Yeah. Thank you very much. So your application says that you'll be using amplifiers, dancing by patrons, live bands, and a DJ. So it asks that you describe your use of indoor and outdoor amplification system, but there's no information there. So is the amplification just for the purpose of bands and DJs?
Yes.
Inside, not outside on any patios or anything like that?
Yes.
Yeah, inside. And then I'm looking at the floor plan, and I don't remember there being any sort of stage or anything in the bar area. Do they perform in the bar area sometimes, or mostly? Is it like, you know, wedding receptions, parties that are privately rental?
Yeah, it would be more so like private parties and events where if they, if the events require them to have a stage, I would assume that's what.
No, no, it may not. No, I mean, I've been there before, but what I'm trying to get at is, is it going to be like live music in the bar area that's more in the general lobby? You know, is it going to have, be more of like a nightclub sort of atmosphere?
No, no, no. I think it would be more so the live bands would be for event purposes only, like if there was a wedding and they had a band. It wouldn't be on a Friday night just having a band in the lobby.
Sure.
Yeah.
Some hotels have that.
I know, I know, some do. I don't think that's what they're intending, but I can definitely confirm that for you.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? I'm good. Okay, all right. It's a public hearing, so I don't know if anyone in the audience, extensive audience that we have tonight, has any comments on this matter? Nope, I don't see anybody rising, so may I ask my colleagues for a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, the motion for our Recording Secretary's benefit is offered by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair will vote aye as well. That's a unanimous four to zero vote, and for the Recording Secretary's benefit, Mr. Kratman is not with us here tonight. We certainly wish him well, but he is out ill at the moment. So that's a four to zero vote. The hearing is now closed. Let me ask my colleagues if they have any motions to offer to dispense with the request.
I'll make that motion to approve the entertainment license with the conditions that the Board of Health is satisfied and the Fire Department is satisfied.
Second.
Okay, so the motion was offered as stated by Mr. Holland, seconded by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The Chair will vote aye as well, so that's a four to zero vote in favor, and we certainly wish your client well and their continued efforts to get things up and running.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Happy Thanksgiving.
You too. Be well. Okay, let me invite Senator Feingold and Representative Robinson to join us. Thank you both for being here this evening. We do appreciate it.
Thank you. And invite Chair.
And I do want to, just for the public's benefit, I know that we invited the other members of the delegation and Representative Howard had a conflict. She indicated pretty quickly she could not attend this evening, and it's my understanding that Rep. Yan is, I believe, under the weather, so not with us. And those of us on this side of the table know what that means, because last week, we were, many of us were under the weather ourselves, so we'll give her a pass on that for sure. But we are nonetheless grateful that you two gentlemen are here, and specifically, I know you received the letter that I sent on behalf of the Board at the Board's request. And what we really wanted to talk about tonight with you are two topics that, in our opinion, are somewhat related, and we're hopeful that you can give us some insights and maybe we can have some dialogue about potential areas of concern, and maybe areas where you might be able to assist the town of Tewksbury. And specifically, I'm referencing the recently discussed housing bond bill that the Governor has proposed, and also the MBTA Communities, so-called MBTA Communities legislation, both of which deal with the housing crisis. And I'm sure you probably both saw it, but for my colleagues' benefit, there was a story in The Globe this morning about the Governor's housing bond bill, and, you know, she referenced, you know, we're 200,000 units short in Massachusetts. And I know we've had some discussions with, among this Board and with other Boards in Tewksbury recently around the housing issues here in town at a much smaller scale, but clearly there's an issue of housing need within the Commonwealth. But the article stated that she's hopeful to initiate making 40,000 new units available. And three of the prongs of the plan that she laid out in the article were upgrading public housing stock and converting state land into housing-ready plots. And that obviously caught my attention because it's the genesis of why we invited you both here in part. The third prong of the comments she offered were expanding accessory dwelling units, which is something we've talked about here in town, too, to make those count towards the housing stock or make it a little bit easier to access. But what caused this conversation, and again, I'm grateful that you both can be here, is we've been wrestling with the MBTA Communities responsibilities, and next week, we're hopefully going to select the sites that we're required to submit, or cite, to the Commonwealth. But among that debate were concerns registered that, hey, we're a little bit unique. We have the beautiful, like 800 acres of state-owned land in Tewksbury, so what happens if? And if we're trying to comply with MBTA Communities and we designate, you know, 1,200 units to be potentially constructed, and then another effort through the housing bond bill is, hey, we're going to take acreage in the state-owned land and construct housing. It raises concerns about, is that a double hit for Tewksbury, or potentially a double hit? And is there any way we can build protections and to mitigate against that risk, if you will? Because once the train leaves the station in some situations, we may be too late to stop it, right? And we're concerned about that. So we all understand that MBTA is a zoning issue right now, but the housing bond bill has potential significance to Tewksbury in light of the hospital being here and literally 800 acres of state-owned land. So we're all, for lack of a better term, ignorant around the housing bond bill, and we would very much appreciate hearing from you both about what you understand to be within it, what, how it's being developed, what implications that you're aware of that might be good or bad for Tewksbury. And then in response to what I just said, if you have any thoughts about ways that maybe we can jointly, you know, procure some protections for Tewksbury, because we're not trying to avoid anything, but we're trying to protect the community from maybe an adverse situation that is somewhat unfair in our eyes.
Okay.
Let me stop there and turn.
Well, thank you. First of all, thank you for having both the representative and I, and our other colleagues I knew would want to be here, but, you know, other things are sickness and prior events. But high level, probably the biggest thing that I hear, whether it's this town or another town, is I've grown up in the community, I can no longer afford to live in that community. And that is basically the universal theme across eastern Massachusetts. I'm excited to go home tonight. My daughter's coming home from college. I'm excited, and she's, you know, she doesn't come home as much as I'd like her to, but that's a good thing, you know? You want her to be at college. But I actually do wonder, when she graduates from college in two years, is she going to be able to even afford to live in this area? So we, unfortunately, as a state, have not done a great job of production, and we have a housing crisis. And we cannot subsidize our way out of this. The Governor's right, we have a 200,000 housing unit shortage. On average in greater Boston, to build a subsidized unit costs about $600,000. And when you do the math, that's $120 billion to basically try to subsidize our way out of this. So we can't do that. So it is going to have to be market-rate housing. And we are asking communities for everyone to do their fair share. Now, I say fair share, because I do agree with, you know, Select Board Member Johnson, that no one should have to do more than their fair share. To the credit of this community, you know, you're very close to 10% on 40B. Many communities aren't even close to that. That's not fair. So I do believe that maybe there's a way that we somehow bring in 40B, because, you know, if you're doing what you should be on 40B, I think that should also matter. I do think that you are going to have to move forward with the MBTA zone. I think that is inevitable for every, for any community, but I do share your sentiments. I don't think that if you do zone where you're going to have increased housing, that then the state can come here and say, oh, by the way, I like your 800 acres, we're going to build another 10,000 units there. That's not what I call fair. And I said, I think everybody should do their fair share, but I don't think that a town like Tewksbury should carry the weight for the rest of the state. I didn't mean to rhyme, I just happen to rhyme. So that's what I want to work on. Now, the important thing to understand is that we have a great working relationship with Governor Healey, but that's her plan, the House will do their plan, and the Senate's going to do our plan. And then we'll all come together and we'll figure it out. So we're still in kind of the fact-finding mode right now, and I appreciate and respect, and I appreciate leadership of Governor Healey for trying to put something out there, but we also have ideas. You know, I do think there's some things that we have to change in the laws to make it easier for people to do production. So we are going at this. So nothing is set in stone, and, you know, we hear you loud and clear that. It sounds like the town is willing to do its fair share, but, you know, shouldn't have to carry the weight of, you know, more than everybody else is doing.
Thank you, Board. So this information is just coming from the House side. This is ultra-specific, and in fact, I was the one on behalf of the House members of the delegation to go and approach Chair Arceiro. He's my colleague from Westford. He's in charge of the Committee on Housing right now, and specifically Chair Johnson, you took my worries right out of my mouth here. I am the personification of this. I'm coming up on 35. I've saved up multiples of what my parents paid outright for their house. I can't have a down payment. You elected me to be the face of this town, to the state, and I can't afford to live here. And it was a bit of a discussion back during the redistricting. I'm happy to be here in front of you today. I took a large part of what was my down payment at the time, but I graduated college in 2012, and as Ms. Louder told you a few weeks ago, the cost of purchasing a house here in my town has about doubled in the 10 years that I've been since I've graduated. It's my grandmother's words, but she said, for a young man, you're pretty successful. So I can only imagine other folks my age and their struggle, especially like me, single-income folks. So I have the same concern, though, because as the Senator said, fair needs to be fair. And I understand that we can't upend the community simply for one generation or preserve it over the concerns of others. The state hospital is a large concern of mine. The information that I got, again, and this is only pertinent to the House side, and this isn't even etched in stone in that, is that the real, the article today touched on the genesis, the Governor's proposal. As the Senator more elegantly put, my half of the legislature, his half of the legislature are going to come up with their own plans. My half is, what I'm hearing, is early next year, post-Christmas. Now, I'm fortunate and I'm unfortunate at the same time that both my communities actually have legitimate legal questions about this, specifically Tewksbury with the hospital, and it's something that I already brought to Chair Arceiro. I look at it as, we're up there, this is possible double jeopardy, and I don't think it's fair that if the Governor says, okay, we're going to go, we're going to work with Tewksbury about the water issue, traffic mitigation, yada, yada, we're going to build 400 units. And for the folks watching at home, or more accurately, for the folks on Facebook, I'm just pulling this number out if it's in there, maybe it's four units, maybe it's 4,000 units, whatever it might be. There is no plan yet, but I think at the very least it should count as one towards one, towards MBTA zoning compliance. I think it's only fair. I don't think she's going to touch colleges, because the colleges, especially UMass and the others, want to keep their campuses as they continue to grow and be the alternative version to private universities. And we're not going to touch what I think is going to be open space, because the constitutional requirements under Article 97 are going to preclude that. She's going to have to ask for acts of the legislature to get parts of Harold Parker or whatever other lands around here removed from the public protection for open space and environmental concerns, in order then to unload that to a developer to make the housing happen. That leaves a few places. Department of Corrections, their parcels are mostly filled, and they're clear-cut around the due to a safety issue, public safety issue. The hospital kind of falls in that gray area, and it's kept me up for a lot of hours at night thinking about how we may about going to do it. The town manager keeps you all apprised, a lot of residents in town know, there's infrastructure issues around the hospitals that the state wants to work with the municipality. I don't think that's bad leverage for us to personally have if she starts exploring those housing options. I also don't think, and this is just myself personally saying, if there was something within the bond bill, and this is very much a long shot, but saying, in the case of Tewksbury, where if she wants to accelerate the 40,000 units, and I actually didn't see the Globe article this morning, I made it halfway through the Herald before I gave up with the media in this part of the world, but that said, if she's gunning for 40,000 units, and that is an accurate quote from her through the media, it may not be a terrible thing for us to approach and ask for a potential legal change, saying, let Tewksbury forego this in exchange for standing at the front of the line and working with the Governor from us and the delegation, the US Municipality, to say, let's just get some damn units built already. Because parts of the hospital fields, particularly down where the intersection of Livingston Street is and in the railroad crossing in that neck of the woods, it's already developed condos there. It's really not much of a huge change to the neighborhood next door. I can't imagine folks living in condos are going to get upset about the appearance of condos in the parcel immediate next door to them.
I would just add that. I think that's a town decision.
Correct.
And I would let the town make that decision, and I respect whatever they decide. And I think what we want to do is if they decide to go that route, then maybe they don't have to do as much on the MBTA zoning.
Right.
But if they do the MBTA, then I don't want that land to also be.
Correct.
So I think that's going to be ultimately your decision. One thing I will add, and I think to Representative's point, which is a very scary number, is if you make $100,000 in the state, you can only afford 20% of the houses that are on the market right now in greater Boston. Is that scary? This is the reality of why this is a major crisis.
Our salaries are public. I would actually qualify for your affordable housing list right now. About $2,000.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, so, you know, and you both have said and acknowledged it, no one at this table, and I don't believe Tewksbury in general, is trying to avoid.
No, you've done your share.
Right? We're trying to meet the multitude of mandates or statutory requirements that all communities need to meet, and we've never said no. And to your point, we are just about 10%. We probably will crawl over that number very soon with the new census and some of the projects that are on the horizon. So we're doing our part, but it seems, at least at first pass, when you read the headline, right? Because you're both saying, you know, the sausage hasn't been made yet. And that's important for, I think, our community to be aware of. But when you take the headline, you have both of these things that are almost in conflict, right? Because it really shouldn't be both.
No, and I think it's important that you raise it.
Right.
Because sometimes these things have, they move and no one thinks about it, and all of a sudden, you know? So I think that's why it's a really big.
I want to get in on the ground floor with you and your colleagues from the delegation to, you know, at least protect Tewksbury's interest in that context. And if there's something we can do informationally or support, an effort, we want to make sure we do that.
Yeah.
So I want to ask a question, and this is something, a number of us at this table have had repetitive conversations in the community, and it's come up over and over again. I don't think it's a mystery, so, but I want to make sure it gets on the record here. And that is, when the MBTA Communities was passed, I think there were four votes against it.
Yeah.
To my knowledge, neither of you two voted against it.
No.
So the community has asked us, why? What's your philosophy behind it? And I want to give you both an opportunity to answer why you supported that legislation.
Because 20% of people, so basically, if you make $100,000 or less, you can't afford 80% of the houses on the market in greater Boston. Try even to find a rental right now. And we're only one of two places in the whole United States where rents haven't come down. We are not going to, you know, the funny thing, I chair economic development. My job is to help grow business in Massachusetts. I talk to CEOs every day. I'm like, I ask them, hey, what can we do to help your business? Hey, what can we do to make you more competitive? What are we going to do here? Housing, 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 housing. That's all people want to talk to you about. Their workers do not want to stay in Massachusetts. We are not going to be competitive as a state. We are going to continue to lose population, and we take for granted what we have here in the state. We have incredible industry, we have incredible jobs, but we can't take that for granted. And the reason why young people are moving to Raleigh, to Austin, to Florida, because it's too expensive. So I did vote for it, because I take seriously when people say to me, I can't afford to live in the state.
Thank you.
My reasons, the personal ones aside that I explained before, the fact that my folks are asking for grandkids, but my apartment's not even big enough to have a cat. I'm 35. I was eight years old by the time that my father was my age, and he already paid off a significant part of the house through his own hard work, but I can't even put a down payment because of competition from developers. That aside, there's three major baskets that make up inflation, because US public officials probably get with the cost of living, typically property taxes in what way, but we get similar questions and have them mitigate. Inflation's through the roof right now. I can't do much about energy unless you allow me to build some sort of power plant in town. I can't do much about food or salary unless we bring in food or more companies into the area, but I can do a damn thing about housing. And across the board, that price is going up, and it's one of the largest contributors to inflation. It's one of the largest reasons, as the Senator mentioned, all those destination cities. Those cities are coming back into the economic upswing. They had a downswing, they have a glut in the market. But at the end of the day, what was happening was the free market wasn't getting there fast enough. This is a way, and I want to make this clear for the folks at home, these units aren't being built, they're not mandated to be being built, something that I've been clearing up a lot of. But it is a way for developers to come and say, all those other hurdles that were there before, I now have a zone where I can focus this, I now have an area with increased housing density, which dollar for dollar, for your municipal finances, is one of the best things out there. You can either ask Mr. Mantori and Ms. Louder. I can help mitigate the elders' property taxes, I can help build them one or two-bed condos where they can sell and move to, either pass their old home down the line to their children, grandchildren, or another member of the community. This is a problem like traffic. We all hate it, but the fact that the housing market's so red-hot and everyone wants to move here is not a bad thing. We just have to make sure we address it, because we can continue capturing that same spirit that's bringing people here in a way that's also affordable, and not sending my friends, who are retired and over 65, to Arizona for six months of the year, or permanently, because they can no longer afford just to even get by here. But housing, housing's one of the few places where my vote can make an immediate difference in addressing the huge cost of living crisis that's worldwide at the moment right now. So that was a big part of my explanation.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Please.
And I'm glad we were able to get you both to discuss your thoughts behind it, because it's. it literally has been one of the most prevalent questions we've had, and we can't speak for you, nor do we want to.
Appreciate that, Chair.
Thank you. Let me ask my colleagues if they have any further commentary or questions around this topic. Mr. Mack.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you both for being here, first of all, it's much appreciated. Senator, you mentioned something that really caught my attention when you talked about the 40B piece. Is there some discussion or something that's going on with a potential carve-out if you're meeting your 40B, or is that a discussion that's ongoing?
No, I mean, I think we're just trying to look at everything right now. So nothing is set in stone, but I think we're looking at everything, looking at, you know, could, you know, potentially, could 40B be a better vehicle to get there, to get these numbers? But nothing's been decided, and we're just, you know, listening to a lot of people. So we're still in the listening phase, and I think, as Representative said, I think we're all probably going to have something beginning of 2024.
Perfect, thank you.
But I do think, I will say, I do think it matters that Tewksbury has done the right thing, that it's at its 10%, and other communities haven't, and I think that should matter.
I could not agree more. That was actually where I was going to go next, is that's been a very big topic of discussion for a very long time in Tewksbury and making sure that we are working to stay at or above that number. And prior, I don't know, the past seven years, we've built almost 1,000 units in town, and we have, again, working through MBTA, which is another 1,200 or 1,400. If there's one person in each of those units, and there's usually a lot more than that, that's going to be a 10% increase on our population, not to mention whatever comes out of the bond bill. So just more information, food for thought. I know nothing's being decided here, but it's a number that really stuck with me, looking at, you know, 1,200 to 1,400 units for MBTA, and then potentially 1, 2, 3,000 more out of the housing bond, plus what we've done in the past seven years, is, would be over 10% at one per household.
If I could comment, though, that's just a theoretical amount. Again, the units are not guaranteed to be built, this is just another off-ramp for applications. So you are boards on the local level, will have the hands on the throttle for this, that's all it is. So I understand the concern.
We appreciate that here.
Now, I guess my question, we really don't, right? Because it is by right zoning. So once it's zoned and there's no density maximum, there's only density minimums.
Correct.
So, you know, once these are zoned in buildable areas, because they have to be buildable, it's going to go up. They're going to get built.
Well, the process for application will begin, same as any other within the community.
Fair enough. Well, again, thank you all for being here, and I think the only piece I didn't touch on was traffic. Tewksbury is, again, one place we're a little unique. Everything in Tewksbury is one lane, or two lanes, one lane each way. Our main thoroughfare is being 38, which you all have done a lot to help us on, much appreciated. Then we have North Street, we have East Street, we have Trull. There's not a lot of good ways to route traffic through town. So that's just another piece of food for thought, one where.
Yeah, I would just say on that, like, we've done a lot of work on 38, but Whipple Road, like, it's like a highway. So I think regardless of what happens in housing, we have to continue to work on those streets, better signalization, having people slow down. So that is going to be a constant, no matter what. And it's funny, because I, as much as people are working remote or in the office only three days a week, I feel like traffic has not decreased, and I feel like our local roads are as busy if not busier. So regardless of what, whatever we do in the housing, we're going to continue to work on Route 38. We're going to try to get more sidewalks, better signalization, better striping, you know, and do as much as we can to make that, you know, 38 as safe as possible and as, you know, it can flow as well as possible.
And again, both of you have done.
Yeah.
Great work for us on that front.
Yeah.
So that's very much appreciated.
Yeah.
I think it's more of, for me, the concern that there's no real way to increase the throughput on those roads.
No.
Because everything's built so close to the road, there's no way to make these two lanes. So there is a cap. I don't know what that number is, but there is a theoretical cap to how much throughput can happen on those roads. And that's going to be a continued reason that I have concerns around some of these larger property requirements.
Actually, Mr. Mack, you have wonderful, I should say, it's a wonderful concern, that's a poor choice adjective, but the addition of every lane brings in about 105% increase in traffic. So even if we did have an ability to throughput, it actually ironically worsened traffic in certain cases. So it's a very, very absolutely valid point that requires a much further view over the horizon than typical. So I appreciate you raising it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm going to ask Mr. Holland and Ms. Womack to just give me one second here because Mr. Krappman had asked me to inquire, and you just kind of touched on these two topics, so I want to get it on the table. And that, Senator, was specifically in response to your answer to Mr. Mackey about Route 38 and our pursuit of additional funding for sidewalks and flashing crosswalks, so safety issues, right, for us seniors.
Yeah.
Talk to us.
Mass Highway, I think, is getting very tired of us because we continue just to advocate.
Good.
And the great thing with redistricting is both Dave and I now both have Wilmington. And as I told people, Route 38 doesn't end in Tewksbury, nor does it end in Wilmington. So those two communities are contiguous, and we have to improve it throughout the whole strip, and it matters throughout the whole strip. So that is something that we're continuing to work on, and we're going to do everything we can to.
Yeah.
You know, get.
We appreciate that. And again, I just want to emphasize, if there's anything we can do as an administration, as an elected board.
I would just say, the more letters that you can write to.
Yeah.
It matters.
Okay.
I mean, it all matters that, there's 351 cities and towns.
Yeah.
And I do think that it's helpful when, be it, you know, DOT and Mass Highway, hear from you. Because they're hearing from us.
Yeah.
So I think it'd be very helpful.
All right. Well, we'll take that to heart. I appreciate that. All right, let me turn to my right and ask if my colleagues on my right-hand side have any questions or comments. Ms. Womack?
Sure. I want to thank you for being here tonight. I know that Representative Nguyen and Representative Howard were not able to be here, but I'm in contact with pretty much all of you often. So, and I appreciate your responsiveness, and I want to thank you for the work that you continue to do on the part of Tewksbury, particularly the earmarks that you bring in. And I know that you worked hard to bring in a $250,000 earmark this year to help us with costs, public safety costs pertaining to the hospital, and that's been another topic of conversation.
We're hoping that's not an earmark, that that is permanent.
Permanent, yeah, no, I'm hoping it is too.
We don't see, we'll see.
And I love that, yes. I have other ideas about other ways to manage those budgets, but I appreciate the hard work that you've done and the narrow language you crafted there to thread that needle. So that's wonderful work for our community, and you have all been resilient in your work for the town, and I appreciate it. I also want to note that I see you in town often. I see you come to public events, and we appreciate it. I see you and Representative Howard and Representative Nguyen come to small things and big things, and you are seen in the community, you are seen by me, and I appreciate that work because that is how I know that you are in touch with our community, that you see what's happening here and you're experiencing what we're experiencing, and that's important. So I wanted to say those things prior, and I also want to thank you, Representative Robertson, for helping us with our South Street residents who have needed some advocacy for development in their neighborhoods. So, again, all of those things are important, and I know that you are responsive to us and you work very hard on behalf of our community and all the communities you represent.
Thank you.
I was reading a study that's coming out, I think there's a presentation from MAPC on November 30th, on some research they did. And that research shows that one in every five homes from 2004 to 2018 were sold to investors. So when we talk about, and you referenced it briefly, but when we talk about how we got in a housing crisis, it's speculative housing, that's a big part of it. And so that's not the fault of any community, and as my colleagues have said and you have said, Tewksbury has worked very hard to do our part. As a community, we've worked hard, we've done, we've wrestled with those issues, we continue to wrestle with those issues. But I think generally, the community is supportive of finding housing for people, and they understand the problem. I want to, so when it comes to these particular bills, I just want to reference a couple of things. When we talk about MBTA communities and putting these zoning areas in, I think it would be useful for you to insert legislation or to, or language or rulemaking or something that would give communities that are doing it, or they're doing extra, or they're putting zoning in places where not just buildable land, but vacant buildable land, which is an important distinction, that they have greater credits on grants for community development, you know, big community development grants from the state, to say, okay, we're putting in this zoning and it's vacant, gee, it would be really great if we can get funding to upgrade these intersections. You know, that's part of that, and so you get extra points when you come before the community say, you've done this, you've done this, you get extra points on that rating. So that makes it a little bit easier for us to access that, or any community that's doing that effort. So that's one thing. I want to be careful that the sense of urgency we feel for housing development, which is very real and very important, doesn't overwhelm our sense for good planning. And to that end, I think it would be, and this, I'm going to take you in the wayback machine, right? Because you and I have been doing this for a while now, and you folks will remember.
I have too, so I better.
I know you have, I know you have.
I'm in the wayback machine.
Yeah, so a little further myself. So you remember back in, I don't know, 2007, 2008, there was an effort to put in a ramp, a break-in access on I-93 for Ballardvale.
Yeah.
Andover. And I don't know if you ever went to those meetings that they had, the tri-town task force. But they were unbelievable meetings, and they were just tremendously run, and it was inclusive of all of the parties, and they really moved, and it was aggressive. And Federal Highway, Rayla Hood came down and said, yeah, we're going to put it in, and then everything went sideways with the recession. So that was the end of that. But that effort that I'm referencing is something I'd like to see maybe you could help us with in terms of working with the state hospital and the town to create a master plan for the two entities together. So that when we're talking about the rail trail and the housing bond bill and all of those pieces, there's a lot of moving parts. And a focus on one thing, I think we should try to say, if the housing bundle is going to look at Tewksbury, yes, we should be able to put MBTA communities aside, and let's focus on this effort, but let's be really smart about it. Let's be aggressive but smart, and have NIMCOG at the table, have CTI at the table, have, talk about all the pieces that are moving, and work with the state aggressively toward that end. And I, so that's something I'd like for you to think about. And so if those things can be talked about as you move forward, I would appreciate that because we, Tewksbury is doing our part, but I want us not to be pressured to chase one solution, or maybe two solutions, and be comprehensive and have the ability for us to advocate for the future of our community because it will continue in perpetuity, and we have to kind of have that infinite mindset.
I'll keep the names anonymous to protect the innocent, but I have to say, from my two communities I represent, not to speak for the senators, but I'm sure your community is the same way, that we're fortunate to have communities that you might bring up things that are perceived unfair based on good points, but you're not resisting for the sake of resistance. You're offering a helping hand of sorts. And it's kind of refreshing because what I've heard, some of the stunts that other towns are attempting to pull, it's going to waste a lot of their local taxes on an indefensible legal position, and these things are going to move forward. I don't think it's a bad idea, though, however, like you said, we've proven our intent, it's a good intent. We're nearly at our 40B to see what we might be able to do through a cooperative agreement like that, however that might look. But there's just one thing I wanted to highlight real quick is, remember, it's, we're on election for every two years, the governor picks every four. So that means the state hospital undergoes a game of musical chairs depending on the administrative changes, which might be a bit challenging. We have to have a fallback plan of sorts or a chain of continuity there for when that happens because, as I'm sure some of your local officials have told you, the relationship amongst from under Governor Baker versus Governor Healy versus whoever her successor might be, the names, the faces, the ideas and attitudes change. So I think it's a wonderful idea, it's just something that we're going to have to make sure that from us on the local aspect, not just as local officials, but local residents and state officials representing locally, we have to make sure to hold their feet in the fire if we go down that way. But I don't think it's necessarily a bad thing to ask, once we have a football kind of to kick around post-January where we know exactly what her thoughts are looking, and there's some writing to be able to edit and negotiate around.
Okay.
Senator Feingold?
Yeah, no, I think what's going to be interesting is, we have a meeting, we're going to be doing a board meeting with the hospital soon, and I think it's an interesting idea, really talk to them about that idea of having a master plan because, you know, it's really felt separate for a long time, you know, what they're doing, what the state wants to do. And I think it's a really interesting point where now it might be time to say, okay, what is the long-term plan for all that land, and what are you doing? Because the thing we've always heard from them is, well, we might need it. Well, what does that really mean? So I think it's really interesting, I think it's something that, you know, we should pursue in the next time that we do a board meeting with them, which I believe we have scheduled soon.
Yes.
I'll definitely bring that up. So I think that's an interesting thought.
I would appreciate that so much, and I think that if we work together in partnership, we're more likely to see, we give the town more agency into what we want our town to look like.
I will just say that going the way, way, way back machine, when Jones Farm was up for debate, I've never seen a more contentious town meeting. I think people are very prickly when it comes to that land and developing that land. So, once again, this is your decision with the state hospital, but I would just, you know.
Well, it's the housing bond bill.
Listen, I go back way, way, way back machine to when there used to be a airport not too far from here.
I know.
And I used to have an ice cream cone, and when I was a good kid, I'd go to Stewart's or Capital's. So this is the way, way, way back machine. So towns have to change, I'm not saying they don't have to change, but I think we should still be respectful that there are some things that make the town what it is, so.
I totally agree. And our colleague, your colleague, Senator Tucker, was the linchpin in getting that land, what, Article 97 land and secured as open space in perpetuity. So I understand the problem, I just, I think there's a lot of concern.
I get your point. I think it's a really, really good point, that I think we should finally have the heart-to-heart with the hospital and say, okay, what is the plan here?
We are two communities, separate but intertwined, and this community provides essential public services.
Yeah.
To the state hospital, it's important that we work together.
Right, with the cemetery, we've had issues, like, it just, so.
It's time.
Yeah, no, I agree.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming tonight.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Holland?
Again, thank you for coming.
Sure.
My colleagues asked most of the questions I was going to ask, but I just have a couple of them. And this MBTA community bill, you know, they did it, and it's a one-size-fits-all, you know, and Boston is eliminated from this for some reason, I don't know why, but, you know, the one-size-fits-all doesn't sit well with me, including the fact that the state might build on state land.
Yep.
And my question is, is there any way to get out of the 40B 10%? Because all we're doing is chasing it. Because the MBTA community says it doesn't have to be affordable.
Yeah, I think, once again, I think it's a really interesting point about, you know, should there be some synergies, some synchronicities between what's going on with 40B and MBTA? I will tell you that there is no appetite to lower that number, you know. But I think it's interesting, and I think we're also interested, if people have good ideas of maybe, you know, they're an alternative, I think if the alternative means less housing, ideas of maybe, you know, they're an alternative, I think if the alternative means less housing, then I think it's going to be tough. But if there's a better way, a different way to, you know, look at the mousetrap, then I think, you know, we'd be open to that.
Okay, that was the one question. The other question I had, whatever happened to the bill, the study on effects of unfunded You started it in 2017, it's now 2023, it's filed every year, and it keeps going to committee to die.
Yeah.
It's just a lack of appetite of those further up. I signed on to it once upon a time.
No, and listen, as someone who's a former member of a select board, I get that. And like, we get upset when the federal government mandates stuff to us. So it is duly noted, and, you know, I think we have to be very cautious when we, you know, put mandates down. It is, it is a balancing act. So I understand and respect that concern.
Mr. Holland, I wouldn't blame you for calling me a son of a you-know-what for it, but there's like, as the senator said, sometimes, no matter what, you're going to hit some rocks in the way you're steering the ship and you're trying to mitigate it. And then I think in this case with housing, it's one of them, you know, and unfunded mandates in general. I remember I got a bunch of flak over it because I always kind of laughed, very fortunate being a product of the school systems that many of you gave to me, you're actively part of, whether it be youth sports or what have you. But I voted for it, I heard from some of our teachers who are private citizens here in town about some of the curriculum that was now forcing them to shoehorn into their lesson plans. It was just no right way, there's only so many hours in a day, and I felt that it was important for these kids to have the focus on U.S. history, and the teachers had pointed out, and there just was no clear answer on that one. So I'm sorry, like I said, I tried supporting it before, and it just didn't have really the gas for it to make it through the whole legislative process despite efforts, so.
Okay. What else did I have? I think we, I'm just going to ask you, is there any type, because you get the 40B, you get the MBTA community, then you have our own thing when you build a certain amount of housing that you have to have so much affordable. There's got to be some type of relief valve somewhere on all three of these. I mean, you can only build up so much pressure, and it's going to blow.
I'm sorry if I, could I ask a clarifying question? So you said the 40B, which is for folks that might be watching at home aren't aware, right, yet 80% rent or less and 20% unit, or there's some more severe alternatives, and we have the Communities Act. And then, I'm sorry, what was the third piece that you were referring to for relief valve?
Oh, are just local builders that have their own property and want to build, and they're required to put 10% in for affordable housing.
Well.
What I'm saying is, you can take the local builders out and just put the 40B and the mandate in, and just turn around and say, well, if we build 1,200 units on the state property, or 500 units on somebody else's property, we're still chasing that 10% because now you need another, you know, 150 units. But there's got to, there's got to be some type of relief valve between these bills that will release the steam so it doesn't explode.
I'll be honest, sir, one of the points that I brought up when I was first in front of the board, which I didn't think was the greatest thing, was the buyout program that was offered for a while. Most municipalities don't allow that. And then I'll be honest, we've been cited by other municipalities in name when I've been in the meetings about the reason not to, because of the amount that we've accumulated in our Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and in the shortage we have on those units. I think that, I'm not steering the ship from that. I don't have all the answers, and I'm not faulting anyone on our local boards because I don't have the full picture. But I think that was an opportunity we, as a town, should have said and used to chip away, because that would have been several dozen units over the course of a couple years, which would now be on the market. The 10% is meant to be a moving goalpost in a sense, that's why they passed it back in the 60s, was because when HUD, when they were still pursuing back what we now call projects today, but the public housing, before those had their collapse in the 70s and 80s, and we moved away from that style, that's why the state passed this law, because certain communities were all trying to keep it in one place. And I don't think that's particularly fair. I know you, Ford, and Mr. Kratman probably would agree that's not particularly fair as a region, we all pick up a little bit of slack, and we're successful for it overall. It's a greater area. But just for my answer, sir, I think that relief valve was holding the proposals' feet to the fire when they came in and saying, we're not going to let you buy out for $100,000 and some odd thousand dollars when you're getting six figures, excuse me, $600,000 for a unit, high six figures in the case of the housing that just went up on Health East Show. I grew up an eighth mile away. That's, that's Westford money.
I would just reiterate that, I hear you that, you know, I think you all want to do your, your fair share, but shouldn't have to have an excess burden, so.
Right.
We'll definitely take that back while we're deliberating, so.
Yeah, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
So in the interest of time, I'm going to try to bring this to a close.
I do have, I have one alibi, Mr. Chairman, I apologize. I would be remiss, you are legislators, so you guys always ask when we have conversations, what legislation could there be? So something to consider, and I know this is a question I've had with our assessor, with the town manager, is we're actually getting ready to do our tax classification hearing. As Ms. Wellman said, there's a whole lot of investment properties, not just the big condo complexes and apartment buildings. I think there may be, it may be worth taking a look at being able to tax those differently. So if it's being operated as a business, we should be able to tax it as a business because the majority of Tewksbury is residential. And I think you're going to have a lot of other communities that are in a similar boat, especially as, you know, we start to continue through these various legislations that are in the pipe. So that may be something to consider. So instead of letting someone like BlackRock continue to buy everything and make all the money off of it, operate it as a business, it should be able to be taxed as one. So just something to consider, and I did say I will be brief, so thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could just add one more thing that's not related to housing? And I understand it's the holiday season, it's Christmas, almost Christmas time, and I don't mean to be the Grinch, but our revenues for the last two months have fallen, and you're already starting to think about your budgets for next year. I'm just putting it out there that, you know, we've had an incredible run, every year, Chapter 70, Chapter 90 have gone up, but we only can spend what we bring in. We're not like the federal government, we have to have a balanced budget. And for the last two months, our revenues have fallen pretty good. So we don't know what's going to happen, but just putting it out there.
I have five seconds to add on to your point, because that was a very salient point. Well, Toronto, Singapore, most Western European countries have put a limit specifically on Chinese investment vehicles out of it, and Boston's seeing the same pressure. And it's not even Airbnb in a lot of these places, it's simply holding it to real estate value and keep the money beyond the influence of the Chinese Communist Party and get it into safe havens. I'm not one to go out there and try to take everything a business does, but as far as I'm concerned, if a business is buying up single-family properties, it's not like one of our relatives who may inherit it and is now leasing this out because it's around the corner of the street, these places buy up hundreds of them, tax them all the hell as far as I'm concerned, or outright banning past 10. Let a small landlord, landlord, or a property owner who actually cares that can be there 20 minutes, an hour later, when your hot water heater finally gives up the ghost, rather than some guy out of some Palo Alto office at a 1-800 number.
You say that, you say that, but I, my understanding is we need legislation to be able to do that.
That's correct. It's, it's already on my short list of.
So that's the takeaway, right? We'd like you to think about that. Certainly, we'd like you to keep a surprise state financial picture because the town manager has begun the budget process, and that's a very important timing issue for us, as I know you both appreciate. And lastly, as the housing bond bill progresses, if you can certainly keep us in the loop on what your respective branches are thinking, and again, if we can support any concepts that you come to be supportive of that might benefit us, we want to be rowing the boat together, so we appreciate that.
And I wish, hope you all have a very nice Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Happy Thanksgiving to you four, and thank you for advocating so much for the locals.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to ask our chief assessor to join us at the table. I'm going to read a hearing notice as we move to the next agenda item. And this is our tax classification hearing, done annually in the month of November, in compliance with Chapter 79 of the Acts of 1983, amending Chapter 797 of the Acts of 1919, and Chapter 40, Section 56 of the Massachusetts General Laws. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be conducted by the select board prior to their determination on the following issues. One, allocating the local property tax levy among the five property classes for the next fiscal year, and selection of a minimum residential factor. Two, whether to allow a residential exemption, and if so, at what percentage of the residential factor. Three, whether to allow a small commercial exemption, and if so, at what percentage. Four, whether to allow a discount of up to 25% for property classified as open space. The above hearing is scheduled for Tuesday, November 21st, 2023, at 7:30 p.m., and we invite both oral and written comments on the above listed subjects. So let me welcome Chief Assessor Foley, and I'm not sure, I guess you're going to walk us through our PowerPoint, is that right?
Sure.
All right.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me here tonight. I also always like to start with a very big thank you to my talented team in the assessor's office. I have a great staff and Board of Assessors, and it, they do a lot of work to get us here, along with the cooperation of many other town departments. We work with everybody from the auditors, treasurer, collectors, building, everybody helps us to get here, and especially Richard and Steve for all their guidance and cooperative team that they've built in town. It's really a great pleasure to work here.
It's great to hear.
I actually, we'll start off with pretty much just what you just read, the purpose of what the hearing is. We always have four little aspects to look at. First is how we're going to allocate the local property tax levy among the five property classes for the fiscal year 2024, that should say, my, my error, for 2024, and the selection of the minimum residential factor, whether to allow a residential exemption, whether to allow a small commercial exemption, and whether to allow a discount of up to 25% for property classified as open space. A residential exemption would shift the tax burden from lower-valued properties to higher-valued properties into those owned by non-residents. This exemption is typically seen in communities that can be classified as large cities, communities with an abundance of apartments and resort communities. In fiscal year 2023, 18 communities use this residential exemption, including Boston, Brookline, Cambridge, Everett, Walden, Antucket, Somerville, and Waltham. Historically, the town of Tewksbury has voted no on a residential exemption. A small business exemption lowers the taxes on parcels occupied by small businesses and shifts those taxes to other commercial and industrial taxpayers. In fiscal year 2023, 14 communities use this exemption, including Braintree, Secon, Swamscott, and Rentham. And again, the town of Tewksbury has typically voted no on small business exemptions. And then the last one is the open space discount. An open space discount would allow a discount of up to 25% for property classified as open space. This discount shifts the tax burden to the residential class. There is no land classified under open space as it is defined by the Department of Revenue in Tewksbury. Historically, we have not granted any discount for property classified as open space. So what is a tax shift? Tax shift is simply shifting the tax rate moves the tax burden to be raised between the residential, open space classes and the commercial, industrial, personal property classes. And where does it all start? It starts with classifying the property, properties classified into five different categories, residential, open space, commercial, industrial, and personal property. And where we really begin with it is the processing of deeds. We, every month, get deeds sent to us from the Registry of Deeds. This past year, we processed, this is actually a data from 2022 because that's the sales data that we use to set 2024's values from January to December. We processed 927 deeds. We take those deeds and then we identify what's an arm's-length sale, which is a sale between a willing buyer and a seller with no unusual circumstances. It's basically put out on the market for sale for everybody, no private sales, that would be considered a, not an arm's-length sale. So once we vet all of that data through sales questionnaires, we have conversations with realtors and brokers, we do a physical visit to every one of those properties, we do an MLS visit, and we use our aerial, aerial photographs to assist with that. We ended up with 273 single-family homes in calendar year of 2022, 117 condominium sales, and then 11 commercial-industrial sales, which includes condominiums, both commercial and industrial. And that's the basis where we start with the valuation for the property. So we analyze those market sales, we take what it's telling us, and we adjust, make the market adjustments to all the properties. We then take that data and hit all of our benchmarks that are established by the Department of Revenue, Bureau of Local Assessment. We then feed all of that data to them, and as long as we've hit our sales data, they will review it all, the property counts and the values, and we also will provide them with all our new growth numbers, and they'll approve all of that by the time we get to this point. The screen is just a recap of where we were for fiscal year 2023. The shift of the 1.66 was chosen. It gave the average single-family home a $365 increase, the average condominium a $97 increase, and the average commercial $145 increase, and the average industrial $3,832. But if you recall, that was really mostly due to Home Depot warehouse that went in last year, and so that inflated really the average number for the industrial. They were pretty similar to commercial without the Home Depot, the new warehouse went in. We had a tax rate for fiscal year '23 of $14.10, and then the commercial tax rate was $26.59. So to start this year, we start with the, with the levy. It begins with last year's levy limit, which was about $94 million. We added fiscal year '23 amended growth, which was $43,000, and we add 2.5%, which is $2.3 million. Our new growth that was certified for fiscal year '24 was 1.9 million. It gave us a subtotal of $98 million. We then add all of our debt, which had been approved, you know, what we have still outstanding, which is $11 million, which brings us to the maximum allowable levy limit of $109.7 million. Then take that maximum allowable levy limit divided by the total assessed value of all the properties in the town, and that gives you your single tax rate. So if we had no shift, right now, our tax rate would be $15.21 for everybody across So this is our average value comparison. Fiscal year 2023, the average single-family home was $553,132. Fiscal year '24, the average single-family home in Tewksbury is $602,548, a change of about 9%. The average residential condo was $397,800, and for fiscal year '24 is $443,94, and that went up 11%. The average commercial was $880,524. Fiscal year '24 is $942,73, an increase of 7%. The average industrial property was around $1 million, it's now at $1.1 million, an increase of 9.3%. The chart below that just shows where we were last year, FY '22 compared to FY '23. You'll see that they're actually somewhat similar, taking out that Home Depot. You know, the, the single, it's almost like the single-family home and the residential from last year to this year switched places a little bit, and commercial-industrial definitely saw a little bit more of an increase this year than they had last year. Things seem to be selling, particularly the smaller commercial condos and industrial condos seem to take an increase this past year. So that brings us to what are our choices of shifts? So this is, we put in to the calculation, the levy limit of $109.7 million. And this will show you the tax rates, the tax rates that would be approved based on each of the shift. So the first line shows the one, which is no shift at all, which gives you that $15.21 that we talked about. And you can see that that would bring, if, if we went backwards and didn't shift at all, it would change the average single-family tax bill up $1,000, $1,366. The condos, $1,100. The condos, $1,130. And then it would bring down, obviously, because there we already shift towards them, it will bring down both the commercial and industrial properties pretty significantly. The highlighted line, the 1.66, which is the minimum residential factor of .8807, would give us a residential tax rate of $13.39, with the commercial, industrial, personal property tax bill of 25, tax rate of $25.24. That would make the average tax bill $8,068, which is an increase of about $269 for the single-family home. The residential condo average tax bill would be $5,933, with an average change of 324. And then the commercial would be $23,919, an increase of $506. And the industrial, $29,432, an increase of 1220.
I think you're off by one line.
Oh. Oh, sorry, right. Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
Let me go backwards. So so the the single-family home is $269 increase. The residential condo would be $324. The average commercial would go 365, and the average industrial would be 1,046 for the 1.66 shift. This shows the variety of the others. After looking at pretty much, you know, where we stand with things and how we typically approach the distribution of things, the 1.66 is the recommendation that Richard has put forward. I wholeheartedly agree with him. I think it keeps us in a good little spot for how we typically shift the tax burden in town. Just switch that over. This screen, this screen just pretty much highlights the shift, the current 1.66 shift along with, if you were to shift backwards to the 1.65 or forward to the 1.67, you can see the the changes that would take place. The average, the tax increase at the 1.66 is about a 3.4% for the single-family home. For the residential condo, it's a 5.8. And for the commercial, it's a 1.6. And for the industrial, it's a 3.7. Again, just highlighting the different amounts of each choice that's in front of you. The screen is really just highlighting the the percentages of how of the piece of the pie. So with the 1.66% recommendation for fiscal year 24, that would put the residential portion at 74.58%, and then the commercial industrial at the 25.41. And we highlight that again if we move to the next screen. So this just shows the pie from fiscal year 23. On the right, it shows the percentages held by each category without the shift. And then on the left, it shows the 1.66 that was chosen last year and the pieces of the pie that it makes up. So you can see visually that the commercial industrial is basically paying more with the shift than they would if we were not paying the shift, and it takes that burden off of the residential classes a little bit by shifting that way. And so if you look at the the next screen, that shift with the 1.66 for fiscal year 24 pretty much holds that in line. You're still looking at a with the shift, you're still looking at the commercial industrials at about 25% and the residential at the 74.5%. And then without it, it's pretty pretty similar, the 15.31% for the CIP in 2024 with no shift, and the residential at 84.69. The this is just a little history of seeing that the levy limit, you know, increased is, you know, increases with each year as we add the 2.5%, the debt exclusion and any new growth that comes in. So we're at the 109.73. And then if we go with, if you end up choosing the 1.66 shift for this fiscal year 24, it will have an excess levy capacity of $11,811. And then I did just before I do the quick recap of the action required, as you're aware, we did as a town modify some of the exemptions and some of the tax relief programs that we that the state and the town sponsors to individuals. So last year, we had a total of, we gave a total of 375 exemptions for the year. Hard to compare to this year because they have until April to come and still apply. But at this rate, we have 350 that are on task and have been approved by the Board of Assessors to receive exemptions. We had increased the veterans exemption, $200 for each veteran who received an exemption. And right now, we have 200 of those that have been approved for this year. The other exemption that we increased was the what we call the 17D, which went from $175 off your taxes to $500 off your taxes. So we have 20 of those that we will be right now granting. And then the other exemptions are pretty much, there's a couple of other disabled veteran exemptions. Those numbers are pretty steady. And another senior exemption, again, that's pretty steady. But we had increased that the previous year. We changed limits, lowered the age and all that by local options. We had done all of that. We had accepted that at a town meeting. So we we have increased the exemptions that we are providing to some of the seniors that are eligible for those. So that brings us to the end. We need to, again, my apologies, I need to update my screens. My fiscal years seem to run together. So we want to allocate the local property tax levy among the five classes for the fiscal year 2024, and the selection of the minimum residential factor. Town manager is recommending the 1.66 shift, which is really the minimum residential factor of .8807. And then you have to choose whether to allow a residential exemption. Town manager recommends no. Whether to allow a small commercial exemption, the town manager recommends no. And whether to allow a discount of up to 25% for the property classified as open space, the town manager recommends no. And that is pretty much it.
Okay. Thank you for those comments and your presentation. Let me ask if my colleagues have any questions they wish to pose.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Holland.
I think, thank you for the presentation, by the way. I think we've had this discussion before. If we do adopt the 1.66, do you know how many homes where the taxes will go down?
I don't off the top of my head, but it would typically be properties that we've been out to that would have had some significant change, meaning they had a
Oh, see, some
Garage that was demolished.
I think we had this discussion before where the value didn't go up that much, but the tax rate came down. And those properties ended up being under what they were the previous year. You don't have any idea?
It can happen. I don't, no. I'd have to run some Excel spreadsheets.
Okay, that's okay. I'm sure Richard will get it for me. What other question? The 927 on Slide 8, deeds processed. There were 526 that, were they refinances or were they, they're not at arm's length sales, apparently.
Multitude of things. A lot of people putting their homes in trusts.
Okay.
And so we have, we process that deed. There are businesses that will put it from one business entity to another, even though it's the same business. So there's a lot of those type of things, a lot of family transactions and things like that that wouldn't qualify us.
But when, I want to go back to that, when they put it in a trust.
Mm-hmm.
A couple of veterans put their houses in trusts, and they're ineligible to get the break?
In order to receive an exemption, you have to, if you, if your house is in a trust, you have to be a trustee and you have to have beneficial interest in the trust. So if you're, if you don't satisfy satisfy those two qualifications, then you're unable to get the exemption with a trust.
I have an answer for them now.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, thank you for being here. Thank you for the great information. Similar to the previous question you just received around that 520-some-odd difference, I've been following Tewksbury's market very closely for the past eight months. And there have been a lot of houses that have been listed for one day and then come down. And I've actually reached out to a few brokers and not gotten a call back or been, oh, no, it's already been sold. So an obvious skirt around the the arm's length requirement. So obviously, nothing we can do here now. But is that something that you all are, at least ancillaryly, aware of? Is that something that comes into consideration when these metrics are being made?
Yeah, so there's a lot of things to consider when it's an arm's length sale. One of our main criteria is, isn't an MLS, will you see it out there? Is it, was it listed to the public? Just because someone snatches it quickly and they and they accept that offer, it's still more than likely considered an arm's length sale because it was exposed to the market, and they're both a willing buyer and a willing seller.
Yeah, no, the the reason I ask that is because, again, there have been a number of phone calls that I've made. I have alerts set up when something gets listed on MLS, and I am calling within minutes or hours, and no call back. And then at 24 hours on the dot, it comes down as sold.
Right.
So those obviously are a little kind of pre-configured
Correct.
workaround for the rule.
Correct. And a lot of that can be that a, that there are realtors working on behalf of buyers that let them know before it really hits everything and the transaction takes place.
Yeah, no, so just to our previous conversation, that's, again, a lot of businesses that are doing, taking those types of actions. So I think it would have an impact, again, if we're talking about 500 and change homes. Those are usually going for under market rate and then being flipped or rented. So again, not not directly related to this year's numbers, but wanted to ask the question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Wellman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mrs. Foley. Your presentation every year is cogent, it's clear, it's it's well explained in a way. I said that same thing three times, I apologize. But I appreciate your work and the work of your team, and I appreciate that you thank them for that. I agree with the town manager's recommendation. I I love your graphs. It's just a really easy way to see, yes, we're kind of, we're staying the course that we have maintained all along. And as valuations and tax levies change, we are doing our very best to balance the burden among our residents and our businesses to the best of our ability. And it, you know, you can see that it really does change. So I have I have two questions for you. One is if you were to put your magic eight ball hat on or, you know, predict the future, and I think I've asked you this before, we've seen, this is 2022 sales data, what is the market looking like when we talk about the future with sales data?
I would say up to this point, we've seen prices continue to rise. You will look out on MLS and you will see some houses that are dropped $20,000 or whatever. My personal opinion is right now is some of those were just thrown out there with the hope and a wish that someone might bite at it and and take it. But I think that we've, we've seen, we've definitely seen the number of sales come down. It's just not as much on the market, which has to do with the interest rate, I think.
Yep.
Increasing, and I think as long as that stays up, well, everything's relative, right? To some people, it's not a bad interest rate, right? When they started buying homes, but to most people right now, it's a high interest rate. So the number of them is down, but the values are up. So I think that next year, we will still see increasing in values in, I think, across the board.
Okay. And then the second thing, I use, you mentioned at the end of your presentation, the 17D, the veterans, just since we've talked at length and worked to make some changes to increase those, that, you know, the people that that's available to. Can you tell me a little bit about your outreach to the community to inform them of these various programs that they can make themselves available of? And this is sort of like your opportunity to market that. And I know you have another program, and I've, we've talked about this in the past, and I can't remember the name of it, but it has to do with enabling senior homeowners to, it's not a reverse mortgage, but
Deferral.
There you are. And so, thank you. If you could just talk a little bit about those efforts, I would appreciate it.
Sure. When guidelines are established every year, we put them out on the website in an announcement and blasted across the town things. We also work with Council of Aging, who has probably better outreach than we do, honestly, with them, and posted on their bulletin boards, but they also post it in their newsletter and things like that. And we have also released, from time to time, articles in the local papers and that sort of thing. There's a lot of word of mouth, you know,
Yeah.
that that comes into play with that group, which is great. It's some, it's, it's difficult to reach out to the people who don't want to be reached, I guess, you know? It's a challenge. But again, we work pretty close with the senior center group, and they have a fantastic outreach person, and their whole group is just really great, and they do a lot of it really on behalf of the town. We have, there are various veterans exemptions that are available for people. You have to have a disability rating of 10% or more in order to qualify for a veteran's exemption, but, and spouses of deceased veterans are also eligible for that. The, there's an exemption for people who have a blind certificate. That's a 37A. They're also eligible to get $500 off their taxes. We have the two different senior programs, which is the 17D, which you have to be 65 or older for fiscal year 24. Your assets have to be under $55,000. There is no income limit on that, and that will give you $500 off of your taxes. The 41C, which will give you $1,000 off your taxes. If you're, you have to be 65 or older. If you're single, your assets have to be under $40,000, and your annual income has to be under $25,653. If you're married, the asset is $55,000 or $38,480. And then there's the CPA exemption, and there is the 41A, which is the deferral program. You have to be 65 or older, and there's limits on that. And you can defer both your taxes and your water and sewer if you so choose, or you can just do your taxes or just do that.
That's great.
Yep. And and they're helpful to the people who who need them. It's, it's a, it's a nice program that's offered.
If I can, if I may, we have, your office does a lot to help people achieve these exemptions if they're eligible. Sometimes I think that, I'm at an age where I'm helping my parent manage finances, you know, my parents. And so it has to be accessible to me. So I'm wondering if you can put some information in the water bills so that all ages will see that and be like, oh, this may help, Mom. You know, and it would, it would get to those folks that aren't in touch with the Council on Aging and wouldn't be in that.
Yeah. I could certainly talk to Richard and Kelly and see.
Whatever. Yeah. I appreciate, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I appreciate your work. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. All right. I just, I wanted just to offer a couple of comments, and I'll try to All right, I just, I want to just offer a couple of comments, and I'll try to be brief to bring this to a vote. I'm going to try to come at this a little bit differently. We usually sit in this room, and I've had this discussion many times, and it, when you boil it down, the headline that everyone thinks about is tax increase. The reality here is that what we're doing is shifting the burden around, as simply stated as it can be. The hearing notice, if you listen to what I read and what Mrs. Foley reviewed on her very first slide, gives us the lay of the land of the decision-making that's done today. So, what I want to stress is that how we got here, the foundation of the decision-making is built on the market conditions, it's built on the historical sales, that is the reality. It is not something that we make up. We have to react to that. And I actually will say that I'm very proud of this board and the boards that I've sat on with other colleagues prior to my current colleagues, in that every single year, we have taken the steps to shift the burden away from residential homeowners, which make up the lion's share of the tax-paying members of the community, and we ask the commercial entities and the industrial entities to accept more of the responsibility than they otherwise could be made to share. And we do that year over year, and people tend to look at this decision-making as we are raising taxes. That is actually, in my opinion, having listened to this presentation and tonight, is not actually accurate. We're shifting taxes, we're moving the burden around. The inevitable consequence of the discussion tonight is the reality that everyone has to pay a little bit more. And why is that? Because in 2022, home sales went up, values went up, and the conditions improved. If you own a home today, you're a happy camper, in the sense that your house is worth a lot more than it was a year ago, or two years ago, or three years ago. No one can escape that fact. And with that value comes the obligation to pay for the value. And no one should try to ignore that fact. That is the reality. We can't have it both ways. We can't say, my house is worth a lot more, but I don't want to pay more taxes for it. That doesn't work. And we are at a point in the year where we've made all the budget decisions, the numbers are cast in concrete about what we are spending as a community, and the spending is evaluated and supported by town meeting in the context of our budgeting, and that's a reflection of what people want for services. They want a good education system, they want their trash to be collected, they want good public safety, they want the library to be open, they want the senior center to offer services, and we've lived through times when those things were not always possible, but now they are, and the community actually is asking for more services. They want other things, and that comes with a cost. So, I think we all, and I'm not saying these people at this table, but all of us as residents in the community need to keep those facts in mind, because we don't, we can't look at this in an isolated way. The headline tomorrow will be that we potentially voted to increase your taxes. That's almost guaranteed, but the reality is, the article should be a lot deeper. It should be speaking about all of the things that you get for those dollars that you pay, the fact that your values have increased, and that this board has balanced or apportioned the responsibility in what I view as a very appropriate, rational, and responsible way to benefit our community as a whole. And I just ask people to try to consider that information, and I want to offer a few numbers to help support that. Among the tax number, the average tax bill that people will be asked to pay, debt exclusions are $846 towards that tax bill on the average home, right? So, that, those are decisions that voters literally made at the ballot box and at town meeting. We wanted to improve the infrastructure of our community. The average homeowner has to pay $846 of their tax bill towards that credit card. That's the reality, can't escape it. We have to face those numbers. I think I heard, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but on the residential home, the values went up 8.9%, but the residential tax change went up 3.4%. Well, 3.4% in an inflation firestorm, in my opinion, is not a significant increase, right? 3.4% is almost table stakes today, and I don't mean to make light of it, because I recognize I'm a taxpayer myself, I have to pay the bills too, but 3.4% is the result of a shift, and that's a pretty modest increase when you consider inflation today. And when you contrast it to the value of your home as an average residential homeowner going up almost 9%, if we just did that on a flat rate, you'd be paying a lot more. So, that has to be recognized. Finally, we're shifting 10% of the overall value in rough numbers. We're shifting 10% away from the residential homeowners to the commercial owners and industrial owners, and that is something that should not be forgotten, because the choice would be to do less than that. We can't do much more, but we could do less, and there is the potential that boards now or in the future might say, we should shift less for some reason, and that has a consequence. So, I look at this as, this is the responsible recommendation, it's the responsible decision, and it puts us, as was mentioned, in a very similar footing to where we are on the expiring fiscal year. We're trying to basically maintain the status quo of equity, if you will, but we have to recognize that values continue to go up, and that is not something that we control. We don't make that decision. The facts are the facts. There were 273 single-family home sales. They drive the numbers on value. There were 117 condominiums sales in 2022. That's the data by state law that drives this decision. So, those are the things that people need to keep in mind, and I know we get elected and we are charged with the responsibility to sit here and do the homework and dig into the detail, and with the capable assistance of the assessor and the town manager and others in the finance area within our town government, we're given ample evidence and support as to why this makes sense. So, I just ask residents to consider those facts and not just fall to the headline. Look a little bit deeper and try to understand what's going on, because tomorrow, that will be the headline, but two or three days from now, a homeowner is going to need an ambulance, and it's going to race out of the fire station to go to their home. Their taxes pay for that. And then, a week from now, their kids are going to go to school, and they're going to stay for extra help with their teacher, and they're going to learn something that they had trouble with. Their taxes paid for that, right? We want to have more sidewalks, we want to have better piping systems for our water delivery. We have people asking us to continuously improve Route 38 and other areas of town. Our taxes pay for those things. So, lacking those resources and the realization that this decision is part of a continuum, not a single point in time, those things all can't happen unless we do this correctly. And in my opinion, this split is the appropriate way to address the responsibility that we have at this given moment in time. So, I'm hopeful people will consider that, and I've never made these comments before at this meeting, because we always view it as, oh, we have to increase taxes, and I don't see it that way tonight. I see it in a little different light, and I'm hopeful that people will try to see it in a way that I'm trying to describe. I may not have done a great job with that, but I'm hopeful people will make an effort to look at it from a different perspective, because we all benefit by the decision that we're about to make, in that we're reducing the burden on the residential homeowner. That's something that I know we won't read tomorrow morning. Okay, those are my comments. We have to take some votes. This is a public hearing, so first, I'm going to ask if there's anyone among the empty seats that wishes to speak, and I will note for the record that there is no one in the audience, so there are no public comments from residents. So, let me take these required action items in the order they're presented on the slide, on Slide 20, and that is the allocation of the local property tax levy among the five property classes and the selection of a minimum residential factor. Do we have any motions by my colleagues?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion for the board to adopt the minimum residential factor of 0.8807, as recommended by the town manager.
Okay, so, for the record, Ms. Wellman offers the motion, Mr. Mackey seconds. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, that's a four to zero vote for the record. Second item is whether to allow a residential exemption. Are there any motions?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to not allow a residential exemption.
Okay, and motions offered by Ms. Wellman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor of the motion not to allow a residential exemption, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, that's a four to zero vote. Third item is whether to allow a small commercial exemption.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to not allow a small commercial exemption.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Holland, not to allow a small commercial exemption. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well, that's a four to zero vote. And last but not least, is whether to allow a discount of up to 25% for property classified as open space. Do we have a motion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion not to adopt a discount of up to 25% for property classified as open space for the town manager's recommendation.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion offered by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. That would be a unanimous vote, four to zero. So, thank you for your good work and for your time this evening. We appreciate all of the effort that goes into building this information and look forward to seeing some more data as we progress.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Happy Thanksgiving.
Yes. All right, as I noted, there are no residents in the room, so I'm going to move right over that portion of our agenda. I'm going to move to new business, and in your materials, we have a notification from the director of the Tewksbury Senior Center that the town has been generously gifted a donation of $5,000 from Virginia Stoll in memory of Walter Stoll. Mr. Stoll recently passed away, but he was a frequent participant at the senior center, and his surviving widow found it in her heart to donate $5,000 for the purposes of the senior center. So, we're asked to accept that donation with gratitude. Can I have a motion on that?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman, to accept the donation, but could we also send this young lady a letter of appreciation from the Board of Selectment?
Second.
Yep, so, we have a motion to accept the donation and a second by Ms. Wellman, motion offered by Mr. Holland. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. And Mr. Montari, could you cover off on that letter for us? Thank you. Okay, the next item we have is the Tewksbury Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee. We have to make an appointment of a student designee. There is one position for a student designee on the roster that is open. You have in front of you correspondence dated October 2nd, and apparently, there are two students, current students at Tewksbury Memorial High School, I do believe, that have expressed interest in filling the position. Ms. Wellman, you are the chair of this committee, have you had discussions and do you have a recommendation?
I do.
On this?
I do, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Kim Son-Wen was previously appointed by the board, she served last year. We reappointed her in the springtime when we did our normal reappointments, so she's already on, she already holds one of the two student representative seats. Maya Sakdev had expressed interest to Principal Long, and so this correspondence from the principal is to kind of memorialize his wish, because we have delegated him to make that recommendation, and then we, you know, ratify that. So, my wish and my motion to the board is that we appoint Maya Sakdev to the second seat for student representatives on the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Committee.
Okay, so, you're making that in the form of a motion, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, the motion's offered by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well, so that's four to zero, and I believe all of these committee appointments have a fixed term, so we'd want that term to be consistent with the term that is appropriate with the other committee members. I don't know that we need to vote that, but we make sure the paperwork is reflective of that.
She knows she's going to come in and get sworn in, and she'll be ready for December, and then hopefully, we will reappoint her in the fall.
Okay.
In the spring run.
Okay, moving along, the town manager's portion of the meeting, do you have anything, Mr. Montari?
No, the only thing I have is a town council invoice in the amounts of $4,250 from October 1st through October 15th, and I'd recommend approval.
Okay, any questions on that invoice? And if not, can I ask for a motion?
I'm making a motion to the approved town council invoice of October 1st, 2023.
Second.
Okay, so, the motion is made by Mr. Holland and seconded by Mr. Mackey. It services from 10/1/23 through October 15/23. The amount is $4,250. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well, so that's four to zero for the record. Anything else, Mr. Montari? No? Okay, we have no minutes, so that brings us to board reports. Let me start with Mr. Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nothing major to report, I was actually under the weather recently, so apologies on that, and I do want to just express well wishes for Mr. Krappman, who could not be here with us tonight.
Thank you, sir. I'm sure the rest of us share that same sentiment.
Indeed.
Mr. Holland?
Yes, I'd like to send out a thank you to Lisa Downey, who ran the Veterans Day ceremony. She did a fantastic job, and to commend Ms. Wellman for doing an incredible job representing the board, and a happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Very good, thank you, sir. Ms. Wellman, how about you?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Holland, I appreciate your comments, and I extend also my gratitude to Lisa Downey for her work with our veterans and to make that ceremony meaningful on such an important day. I have a few things. I served as a panelist a couple of weeks ago on the Lowell Sustainability Council Summit. I was invited because I went to an EV event in Lowell, and so, and then I talked to people, and then things happen. So, I served So I served as a panelist at that event. It was really interesting in two ways. There were a lot of young people that attended that event and that cared about sustainability, and they were included in that summit, so it was great to see that and the work of so many dedicated people in Lowell committed to sustainability. And they have, they have a staff person who does this work, and that's her full-time job. And she was just incredible. And regrettably, I don't remember her name, but she was, she got a lot of support from the members of the council. But it was also interesting to hear, of all the work that they were doing, Tewksbury does, has done a lot of that work. And we were very early, thanks to the town manager's leadership and other staff members in putting EV charging stations in around town and looking at, you know, infrastructure improvements and buying into solar programs to reduce our energy costs. So I just want to commend the town manager and staff for having their eye on the sustainability ball for a while now. And while we aren't racking up lists of our achievements and things like that necessarily, I think it would be good to do that sometime and throw it up on the website because you have done a lot of work. And it was really, it was really great to kind of say, wow, Tewksbury, Tewksbury's there, and Lowell is doing tremendous work as well. So I want to commend them for that. I want to remind everybody that the Open Space and Recreation Committee invites folks to get out, enjoy, and enjoy the trails this winter. The Winter Tree Walk starts the day after Thanksgiving, and it runs through New Year's Day. And that is where local nonprofits have decorated trees along the trails. It's just a great way to remind you to get out and use these trails. It's really chilly lately, but we have a long winter ahead of us. And being able to use these tremendous assets that we have and that our volunteers care for is just wonderful. So I want to thank them for that work and all of the nonprofits that have participated. Finally, the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee met recently at the beginning of the month, and we welcomed some new members, and we'll look forward to welcoming Maya as well. We received a grant update. And we did a hot wash, or like an after-action report, on the Pride Month. We haven't met since June for a variety of reasons. So it was great to get back together and kind of discuss how things went. We had such a tremendous response from the community. We had a number of people from different state groups that attended, that actually live here or visited just to see what we were doing, and they were really impressed. And I want to particularly say thank you to our police department for their tremendous support that evening, in spite of the thunderstorms that came in. And we also had tremendous support from our legislative delegation. So it was, it worked out really well. We had a lot of people in the community attend, and we're thinking about how we want to have that event and improve upon it for next year. And then I wanted to add that the committee developed a statement during that meeting that I'm going to read to the board tonight. The members of the Tewksbury Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Advisory Committee were appalled to read a letter sent to a member of our legislative delegation, Representative Traum-Win, on October 30th. The committee finds that the language in the letter to be repugnant and in no way reflective of the civil discourse we are accustomed to in Tewksbury. We condemn this letter and its hateful rhetoric. As a community, Tewksbury seeks to be welcoming and inclusive to all our members, regardless of race, gender, sexuality, religion, gender identity, ability, economic, or housing status. And that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wellman. I just have one item, and that is, I want to make note that the police department received a $37,000 grant. I want to commend them for accomplishing that. It was a competitive process, as I understand it, and I think it is something to be proud of. I know our various town departments are always on the prowl for grant opportunities, and they represent us well. And here's another successful grant that we are receiving that will help in the public safety realm. So congratulations and thank you to the administration at the police department for accomplishing that. And I want to thank Ms. Wellman for subbing in at the 11th hour on the 11th day of the 11th month for me, and I was under the weather. And as Mr. Holland mentioned, you did a tremendous job on short notice, so I'm grateful for your efforts in that regard. So thank you. That's all I have. I do want to note for my colleagues' benefit, next week, we have a meeting. It's the last meeting in November, obviously. We have on the agenda the annual license renewals, so there's a little bit of a process entailed with that. The agenda will also include the further discussion on the MBTA community site process and decision. We took those recommendations under advisement. We need to get to the next step. I believe the planning board had met and made a recommendation. We now have that information as well. So I think that's important for us to be prepared to address next week. And for the benefit of interested parties, unfortunately, due to illness and the lack of a quorum, last week, we had to cancel the housing discussion that was set up with other boards in town. And just to put everyone's mind at ease, we, we haven't forgotten about that, but with the holidays descending on us, we're going to wait until after the first of the year, and then we'll regroup and schedule that meeting, and we'll take up the agenda that was previously circulated to the participants. So I just want to note that for the record, in case you're following for that. All right. I have nothing else, so let me ask if there's a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Mackey and Ms. Wellman for the second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and we are now adjourned at about 8:57. Have a great Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thank you.